All right. Good evening, everyone. It is Monday, October 13th. The time is 7:34. And I'd like to call this meeting to order for the Urbana City Council. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Wu?
Here.
Councilmember Evans?
Here.
Councilmember Hershey? Councilmember Colasetti?
Here.
Councilmember Bishop? Councilmember Wilkin?
Here.
Councilmember Quisenberry?
Here.
Mayor Williams?
Here.
Thank you.
All right. Next item, thank you, clerk. Next item of business is approval of minutes from previous minutes, which there were none. So next, we will have additions to the agenda. Are there any additions or changes to the agenda? All right. That is awesome. Seeing none, we will move on. Now, we will move on to public input. Is there anyone from the public wishing to provide public input at this time? All right. Are there any written public inputs or anything received? All right, we're off to a good start, y'all. All right, we will move on. Next item is the, it's closed session to discuss collective bargaining negotiations, the appointment, employment and composition, specific employees and property acquisitions pursuant to 5 ILCS 120-2C2, 5 ILCS 120-2C1, and 5 ILCS 120-2C5. Can I get a motion to enter into closed session?
Moved based on the parameters that the mayor suggested.
Second. All right. Thank you. Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Jaya. I'm so sorry. Yes, do I need to read through all that again? Okay, thank you so much. All right, for the public, we are now entering into closed session and will return to council chambers for the remainder of the minute after this meeting is concerned. I do need to vote.
Roll call votes.
Please, clerk, will you please call roll?
Councilmember Wu?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Colasetti?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilkin?
Yes.
Councilmember Quisenberry?
Yes.
Thank you.
Now, this time, we are going into closed session. Thank you all. All right. I think we got everyone. Can I get a motion to return to open session?
So moved.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Grace. All right, we will move on.
Councilmember Wu?
Oh, sorry.
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Colasetti?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilkin?
Yes.
Councilmember Quisenberry?
Yes.
All right, no, thank you. We are back. I'm not tired at all. All right. Next, now, we will move on to council input and communication. Are there any council members who would like to provide input? Jaya?
Yeah. In recognition of Indigenous Peoples' Day, I'd like to read a modified version of the land acknowledgement statement suggested by Native American House from the University of Illinois and state that it would be appropriate to recognize and acknowledge that we are on the lands of the Peoria, Cascasquia, Pianca Sha, Waya, Miami, Muskutten, Audawa, Sak, Muskwaki, Kikapu, Potawatomi, Ojibwe, and Chickasaw nations. These lands were the traditional territories of these native nations prior to their forced removal. These lands continue to carry the stories of these nations and their struggles for survival and identity. As a community with a land-grant institution, the University of Illinois, which has a particular responsibility to acknowledge the people of these lands as well as the histories of dispossession that have allowed for the growth of this institution and our community for the past 150 years and longer, we are obligated, we are also obligated to reflect on and actively address these histories and the role that this university and this community has played in shaping them. This acknowledgement and centering of native peoples is a start as we move forward. So I want to make sure that we are centering the folks who've been forcibly removed from these lands as we have these conversations. I also want to, on a totally different note, express my appreciation as someone of South Asian heritage for the Diwali events that the city is supporting this year. I've never seen that before, and that is something I'm really excited about.
Thank you. Any other council communication? I'll say, just to kind of fill everyone in, in regards to the financial literacy program that we have, registration closed this past Friday. We have, funny enough, 100 registrants of folks that signed up. Fifty of those are from the ages 21 through 35. The other half is 37 through 61. Seventy percent of those individuals who have signed up are Urbana residents. Eighty percent are employed, 20% are unemployed. I personally think that those are, you know, some great statistics. I am excited and looking forward to getting this started. The October 17th, we will have our initial kickoff, you know, event where we will, essentially the program will kick off and launch. So, thank you to everyone who shared the communication and especially grateful to the participants as they are, you know, taking that step into, you know, the next phase of their financial journey.
I was just going to ask, can you add the portion of Spanish-speaking option, which still has opportunities for registration?
Thank you. Yes. So, we have a Spanish version, a Spanish-speaking version that will, essentially, it's remaining open until Wednesday midnight. So, you know, we had a lot of inquiries about that, so extremely excited to, you know, to let folks know that we have that option as well. So, yes, Wednesday midnight, you have until, you know, that registration closes. So, thank you. Thank you, Darius. All right, is there any additional input, comment? Seeing none, we will move on. Next is reports of standing committee, which there are none, so we will... I am so sorry. All right. Y'all, I apologize. We will now move to unfinished business. Huh? No, I'm sorry. That was my bad. Seeing none, move on. I'm looking. Did I miss it? Jesus Christ. Oh, my goodness. All right, so unfinished business, which is the approval, though, correct? Approval of the ordinance number 2025-09-025 and ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance, amendment number two. Omnibus. Thank you. I have that here.
I will move approval.
All right.
Second.
Approval made by Mary Alice, seconded by Jaya. Is there any additional conversation? James?
I will point out that I believe this needs six votes by the corporate body. We do have six votes here because the mayor votes. But if anybody is uncertain about voting yes for this, I would ask them to speak out because then we would need to defer it to a future meeting when we have more council members here.
Speak now, forever hold your peace. Otherwise, clerk, will you please call the roll? Grace? I'm sorry, Grace.
It was somewhat similar things, and then just kind of refreshing our memory because this did come up, not last Cal, but it's been a few weeks, I think, because we needed the mayor here for that sixth vote, and was just refreshing our memories, confirming that there's no change in the ending balance for the general operating fund and just a reduction in IT. And so, I was just refreshing my memory on this one since it wasn't immediately last week and confirming that that delay was because we needed the sixth vote.
All right, is there anything additional? All right. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Wu?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Colasetti?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilkin?
Yes.
Councilmember Quisenberry?
Yes.
Mayor Williams?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. I am so sorry about that, you all. Now, we will move to the committee of the whole. Mr. Evans, you have the floor.
Thank you. On behalf of this committee of the whole, I'd like to move for approval the following resolutions. Resolution number 2025-10-076R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a community development block grant sub-recipient agreement with the Champaign County Regional Planning Commission's tenant-based rental assistance management for fiscal year 2026. I would also like to move resolution number 2025-10-077R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an Urbana home consortium sub-recipient agreement with the Champaign County Regional Planning Commission for tenant-based rental assistance for fiscal year 2026. And finally, resolution number 2025-10-078R, a resolution authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement for rental assistance between the city of Urbana and Cunningham Township Supervisor's Office for FY 26. I move all three of these resolutions for approval.
Second.
All right, motion made by Chris, seconded by Mary Alice. Is there any additional discussion?
Question with consent.
No, there's no discussion here? Oh, my goodness, I am screwing up. All right. At this, clerk, will you please call the roll? At this point, will the clerk call the roll?
Councilmember Wu?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Colasetti?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilkin?
Yes.
Councilmember Quisenberry?
Yes.
All right, thank you, and that motion passes. All right, we will move on to the regular agenda with there being no regular agenda items, so we will now move on to special reports, or reports of special committees, which there aren't any. So we will now move on to reports of officers, which, looking, it doesn't look like there are any. Next is new business, which there's no new business. All right, at this time, we will move on to, we have two mayoral appointments to the Urbana-Champaign Big Broadband Board, known as UCTB, for Mr. Thomas Webb with a term ending June 30th, 2026, and Leon D. Wilson with a term ending June 30th, 2026. Can I get a motion to approve these two appointments?
I'll move approval.
All right.
Second.
Motion made by Mary Alice, seconded by Jaya. Any discussion? Grace?
Just as usual, thank these two for their willingness to serve, and I'm not familiar with this Big Broadband Board and didn't have a chance to look it up. I didn't know if anyone here has any information, and if there's any other... Yeah, I think that's it.
Go for it.
So, it is a group that was formed from the incentive program under the Obama administration after the, after the Great Recession. It was, it was funding to increase internet access in all areas, particularly underrepresented groups, and it built a huge fiber ring in the Champaign-Urbana area that got transferred to this nonprofit that is called Big Broadband, and, and we have a seat, we have seats on that to advise it because we're one of the community groups involved with it. The, the group, the local group, ITV3, is a commercial program that, that shares, that sells internet on that, on that fiber ring, but there's also community access, like the Urbana Free Library and the city and other groups get to benefit from that, from that resource that was paid for when the federal government believed in funding things.
All right, thank you. Mary Alice?
I feel like I have to chime in a little bit because I was in on that original grant. James is smiling at me. I will tell you this, that James is absolutely right. The main purpose of that grant, we were the only community in the United States to get this grant for this purpose, which is the last mile, which means bringing internet into the home. We were it. We got over $22 million for it. So this just encourages, it furthers that vision of bringing internet access to people who it's not as easy for them to get, and that's what the board's about.
Thank you. All right, seeing no further discussion. I'm sorry, Matt, sorry about that.
I was going to tack on just a little bit because I also have history. I was, I advised the UCTB intergovernmental consortium prior to becoming this board when I was with the city of Champaign, and one really notable piece of this is the first fiber-to-the-home build-outs were all census block, underserved parts of both, both cities. That was really the, the key anchor part of the federal grant, and then, of course, the anchor institutions, which Councilmember Quisenberry referenced. The other thing, when this board was formed, one of its primary purposes was there is a community benefit fund, pot of money that was being collected each, each year from the private partner, the company that was essentially operating on the, on the fiber rings. And this board's role was to spend that money essentially in a manner that was consistent with the, the vision of the grant originally and also with the city's ongoing values and goals, so.
Thank you. Yeah, Darius and I got a very detailed presentation on this, so I appreciate Thomas and Leon stepping up. With no further discussion, clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Wu?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Colasetti?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilkin?
Yes.
Councilmember Quisenberry?
Yes.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, that motion passes. All right, the next is a discussion item regarding Police Surveillance Technology Ordinance Number 2024-12-042. Are there any updates to begin our discussion? Grace?
Yeah, I'm happy to kick us off unless Exec has any, wanted to start. So, realizing that we're almost at 10 o'clock and had a lot of other meetings and topics tonight, so I would totally be down for a, you know, short discussion here tonight. What I, I was trying to simplify, kind of like, what are the next steps? So I think, just lay out here for you some that are already completed and some that we could still work towards. We've talked about some of the language updates, and I'm willing to take that on of, like, adding surveillance technologies and surveillance databases, and some of the things that we've considered when we talked on September 15th, exactly, almost a month ago, and we went through together on the screen, and we highlighted some things that we might want to revisit, some of the language. So I think there's some of those language pieces throughout the ordinance that are still remaining. And then, from the city, what I was thinking would be a nice to-do list is to compile the surveillance technologies and surveillance databases that might potentially be covered in an updated combined list that's movable, which is exactly what we've been provided. Tonight, it looks like this is the combined list of the two that we've received previously. So this is like the big master list that has everything, right? Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Darius and everyone else who put that together. And it looks like we also were emailed an Excel version, too, so we have a way to move it around. So that's an awesome thing off of our checklist on the city end, so I think that's an important piece for us to kind of go through that list next and understand and ask questions about each specific technology. Other thing on the city end, maybe for attorney, for Matt, we had talked about defining emergency situations and that issue in city code versus state law and things, so that's something I was hoping we could put on to-do list on city or attorney end is look us up a better definition for emergency situations that we might want to also put in the city code. And then, as far as council to-do list, I think that our next big to-do things would be define surveillance technologies and surveillance databases. I sent out some supplemental notes, I think, since the last time we've talked. I can't remember when we've talked since then. No, we did go through on the screen, side by side in the table of the definitions between what's on the table currently for Urbana versus Oak Park, Illinois, city code procedures. So hopefully, that note is helpful, and you could review some of those side by sides, and then eventually, I think, we'll need to decide our own definitions and decide which of our existing technologies on this big compiled list in front of us or any potential future ones might apply. And I was thinking that maybe a nice place for us to start, when we have time in a future discussion, is even maybe we have, you know, a side of like, yes, definitely applies as surveillance technology and surveillance database covered by this ordinance, and no, definitely not, and at least start putting some of the main, like, absolutely yes, absolutely no pieces, and then kind of work our way towards the gray areas, was just kind of a thought for me on, like, how do we kind of get some momentum and not get stuck on things, but at least start with what is clear, clearly applies and clearly doesn't apply for our interpretation. And then also, if we wanted to consider private cameras, is maybe a whole other can of worms that Oak Park has that we had not considered necessarily in this one, but might be something to consider that was kind of brought up in our past discussions. So those are my thoughts on kind of some to-do lists and where we could go next and find to not necessarily do all of that tonight, but happy to hear other thoughts.
Mary Alice?
So I just wanted to kind of add my voice to an idea that James had come up with in terms of the surveillance data, the surveillance database being specifically tied to surveillance technology and the data that it generates, is, I believe, what the suggestion was. I like that because I think it's very clear, and I don't know what the thoughts are of the other council members, but I like that direction, and if that's a direction, then we don't need to define what a surveillance data is because it's already defined with the surveillance technology, right? So we wouldn't even need to do that component. So that was one thought that I had. Then the second thing, and I know I've been an advocate for let's start with something, and there's other things that we might want to add on later, and so I feel a little bad suggesting this, but based on the earlier conversation that we had when Darius gave us the first run of all of the different items on the spreadsheet, and there were things like YouTube and Google, and I was like, but these are tools that everybody uses. I believe Jaya and Chris were like, yeah, but we still want to know that they're being used for these purposes. So my ask here is, we probably need a section in here that says there are common tools that are used in every day. They don't need approval, but they need to be listed, and basically, so I'm just going to throw that out there. There's two things I've been thinking about.
Grace?
Thank you. Yeah, which makes sense, and trying to go back to the database piece because, again, that's the current proposed existing definition of surveillance database is information collected from surveillance technology, right? But, so we don't have to find that, but then we still need to define what is surveillance technology and some of those in-betweens, right?
Yes, my, my thought was, is that we just don't even define surveillance data because surveillance data is captured by surveillance technology, so we don't even need that definition in there, right? Cut that out, and then the real meat is what is surveillance technology?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I see. Yep, thank you. Yep, totally makes sense, and then, sorry, I had a thought on your second comment, too, but then I lost already. What was your second comment?
It's, it's good for transparency purposes to have a list of common websites, common tools that people use every day, but do we need to be approving the fact that the police department uses YouTube, for example? That was, that was my question. Can we have, like, certain tools that we know that are just part of what people use every day now, and it's listed there so that it's known to the community what's being used, but it's not part of the approval process?
James?
I guess I'm a little bit curious now, thinking about it in those terms, as to whether the city, the technology team, or management has a acceptable use policy, and, and that would be a place where you might define the common tools that staff members of the city use and have it be declared, these are what they are, but I don't know if we have an acceptable use policy for our technology space. We have about five of those at the University of Illinois, by the way.
Go ahead, Jaya.
So, yeah, I hear, I hear that point, Mary Alice. I think that that could make sense. I think the one thing that came up, I think, with Chief Boone, but I'm sorry, I'm losing track now, is that even some of those tools, I think it's important for residents to know how it's being used, right? Like passive, like, you know, checking something or checking something based on a lead on Facebook, for example, is different than, like, actively monitoring it with the purpose of tracking our residents, right? Like, what you could do with publicly available tools, right? So I think that's, I like your idea in general, but that's, that's, that's just the one piece that makes me pause a little bit before just saying, ah, here's the bucket of, like, everybody has access to it. Yeah, everybody has access, well, lots of people might have access to those things if they choose to engage with those platforms, but not everyone can arrest someone based on what they're seeing.
Grace?
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up, and I think that's what we were, what was brought up in some of our past discussions, too, right? And so is that what you're suggesting, that kind of general policy for use on non-surveillance technology, like even a Google search, and I think that's what we'd talked about before, that there can be these kinds of benign things that are fine to use in your professional capacity, but not to, you know, have these kinds of certain purposes for your own personal gain or to harm others or for any other kinds of activities? And so I think that that would definitely make sense, and is that what you're saying, too, to kind of include some of those platforms?
Well, I actually, I'm going to sound like a broken record. I like what, what James is saying, which is, you know, the use of the tool, and I'm just thinking, you know, we, we don't expect people to be grocery shopping, right, on, you know, on the web, but you can certainly do that grocery, I'm saying an employee grocery shopping on a, on a computer. So it's more of a general policy as the city and not necessarily a general policy just for specific departments, but I don't know.
Jaya?
Yeah, I think I'm struggling with this a little bit just because we've had a situation recently where protesters were identified partially using publicly available data. At least, that's my understanding, and that's something I would hope that our police department would not be tracking down people for, I mean, that, that went through the court, I guess I have my own opinions on that, but I think having a clear expectation and understanding for residents, if that is something that could happen, would be important to me because, because it's happening, right? It's stuff that happens locally. So, you know, maybe it's, I guess I'm also trying, I'm trying, I'm trying to find that balance of, like, how do we provide clarity and protections, but also understand that there could be a situation where law enforcement might be using, again, that publicly available data, right? You know, if they, they've been alerted to somebody sharing something on social media that is directly related to a crime, you know, that's following up on a tip versus just, like, passively, like, oh, I don't like this person, or they're part of this group, so I'm going to make sure that I'm, and I'm not saying this is happening. When I say that this, some stuff is happening, that's not what I'm talking about. But I do think that that's where it's important to have guidance and accountability, right? Because I think there are other tools, again, not our police department, but where there have been incidents of local police officers misusing tools that they had access to, to stalk people and things like that.
Yeah, I mean, this is kind of where we get stuck because it is a fact, they use social media all the time to solve crime. Real crimes legitimate, for legitimate reasons, and I think the distinction is intent, right? Am I just throwing a dragnet out to fish, or we're specifically tracking the people to find them because we have a high probability that they did something, and if we see them, we're going to arrest them, and this is the tool that we're using to find them? And so I don't think any of us object to that. And I've been very reluctant to enter into this conversation because it gets so easily complicated because the transition from investigation to surveillance is fluid. For example, if you have a large crowd like the Up Gathering, the Pride Gathering that will happen in downtown Urbana, there's 5,000 people there, and if we had two uniform officers there walking around, that's a form of surveillance. that's a form of surveillance that we would all agree is probably a good idea to have a couple officers to be there just in case, right? Somebody needs some help, somebody needs some assistance, injured, drunk, whatever. Two uniformed officers just walking around is not anything that we would object to, A, because we know it existed and we'd already have agreed to it. But where it gets to be abusive is if those two officers are walking up to only brown people speaking Spanish so they can get them on their body cam and want to give it to ICE later. That's the surveillance we don't want, right? So it's always intent. And it's so hard to parse out and make big rules. And Matt can tell you that's what, why the law books and law libraries are never-ending because you're trying to think of every scenario all the time. So I'm kind of, you know, in league with Mary Alice here in that let's just get something down and add later or correct later and all that. And let me throw another thing at us. And this is not going to be any help, but this, we're asking for an annual report on all these tools and what you did with them and what were the outcomes, all good things to ask for. But this is a police department that has not produced an annual report since 2021. This is a police department that still hasn't produced this year's use of force, 2024 use of force report. So I'm not skeptical, but I just wonder, can they keep up with all these reports that we're giving them? You know, these required reports that we're giving them to do? It's just a concern of mine, and I don't know what, how we resolve that. But, boy, that was a babble about nothing, but anyway.
Thank you, Chris. Jay?
So I think, you know, the capacity piece is worth talking about for sure. Jumping back a bit to what Mary Alice was talking about because I think we may have touched on this in a previous meeting, too, that this might be almost like a category, right? Like, this is just creating a basic framework, right? What needs a policy, right? But maybe there is a template policy for publicly publicly available, you know... My brain is fried, it's after 10 o'clock. But, you know, things like Google, Facebook, you know, Instagram, other social media, that maybe there would just be a template we plug into. We're not asking to reinvent the wheel every single time. But, you know, oh, this falls into that category of publicly available. But here are our expectations for how the city would use it, right? That it would be for investigation for a specific crime, not for general monitoring, for example, right? That that would be something that would be developed as part of that process. But this is step one, and I think we're going to jump into step two. And again, I think that the question about capacity is worth having, but I think it's also a... This is a different administration that might be expecting compliance in a different way in terms of what we're already asking for from departments, right? That those things that are already required should be getting done. And not getting done is not a reason to ask them to do more.
Yeah. I just want to throw in, too, that, again, it's always back to intent. And what the department is worried about and what the public, some of the public are worried about is that are you going to counsel, micromanage the department so much that you're going to make them have approval to use MedCAD, which they use almost by the minute? And again, it's back to intent because the fact is that an Urbana police officer 20 years ago used MedCAD to hunt down a victim to rape them. So MedCAD can be abused. But that doesn't mean we're going to, you know, call it a surveillance tool as some kind of, you know, you know, malevolent, you know, bad tool that police use. They don't use it that way. It was one person that misabused that tool. So I don't know how we... I just, I don't think just because it's there doesn't always mean it's going to be used inappropriately. We just got to have the guidelines in place if it does, that's all.
So the the requested changes, changes that we discussed, are we bringing this, those changes, updated changes, back to conversation then or discussion for next meeting or? Grace?
I mean, this is all discussion. So I think we can continue it. I think we have good thoughts, next steps.
Did you track this enough, Grace, to kind of give us a one, two, three list of where we're going generally? No? Okay.
Not really, no. I mean, I don't think I can go, you know, word for word. I'll come back and hear the words typed up. I think this was all pretty subjective, higher-level stuff that, no, I'm not going to have in a written-up presentation by the next time, by any means, yeah.
But we, what I'm asking generally, and what the mayor just asked, is do we have our next steps kind of figured out a little bit?
I think, I think.
Yeah, if I may, I think that what what Grace described at the beginning of this conversation gave next steps for city staff and for council. And I think that that to me seems reasonable. I think the additional discussion tonight, I think, maybe re-center some pieces and also gives us a space to kind of think about, you know, what do we need to clarify, right? That not, not all tools are created equally, right? And so we may need to make sure that we're incorporating that into the language. I guess I just want to remind everyone that this is not where we create the policies, right? The use policies. This is the, let's create general guidance of what needs a policy, right? So just encouraging us not to get too far down that rabbit hole. And if we need to think about maybe a little bit longer timeframe to make it feasible, right, for for city staff, I think that that's a conversation we certainly can have. Or what do we prioritize? Maybe that's, you know, when we're looking at this list, what are the priorities for making sure that we have lists? So kind of going back to Grace's point of, yes, this definitely needs a policy. Let's get moving on that. To, you know, we can just check these off the list and say these fall into this other bucket that doesn't need a policy. And then there's the maybes or the ones that need like a, yeah, this is standardly available, but here are our expectations for how city staff would use it. So I think kind of using that different bucketing approach as we review these items. And again, keeping in mind, you know, to some of the points I've brought up, we're not going to catch everything. Some of this is about setting general expectations. We don't have to reinvent the wheel. Other cities have already done this. Grace and community members have done a ton of research around this. And I think we're getting close. So I think if we just, and for those of us whose brains are fried, we have the benefit of this being recorded. So we can all go back and revisit it. We don't have to ask Grace to do that for us.
Any, anyone else? Grace?
Yeah, appreciate the discussion and look forward to continuing. I will just say, a quick thought and a question. I understand kind of taking some steps, but I think we've seen some examples where we've passed something in a pretty compromised way and with the intention of coming back and beefing it up. And that hasn't happened, like CPRB stuff with tasers and the side letter that's still there that sets a precedent for a long time down the road. I think our relocation ordinance. And there's been a lot of times where it's something new and we water it down to not make too many waves in the beginning with the thought that we're going to come back and improve it. And happy to hear of examples when that has happened, but I've only heard of mostly examples where that doesn't happen. So that's why I'm cautious and would really like to try and pass the most complete, best version that we can the first time around. And then my question was, if we could have any follow-up information from city as far as existing policies for publicly available technology and that kind of use,